Is the webcast working? Confirm that, thank you. Good evening, members. I'm going to just run through and introduce people in a minute, but if we can start off, please, I don't know whether it's up here or not, we've got a fire. We're not having a fire drill this evening, as far as we know.
We're not.
So if the fire alarm goes off, panic and run over to waytrays, means under the canopy. Can I ask that people turn off their mobile phones or switch them to silent, if you wouldn't I would just like to run through the officers and the members who are here, for the sake of the webcast. We have Officers Graham Clark. In fact, I'm going to ask you to introduce yourselves individually as quickly as you can, so if we start with Graham and run around the table that way, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Graham Clark, Strategic Director.
Lewis Jones, Planning Solicitor.
Daniel Bainbridge, Borough Solicitor.
Elizabeth Sims, Head of Planning.
Ian Mottrell, Principal Policy Planner.
Gail Woodton, Principal Policy Planner.
Thank you very much indeed. And we have a number of members here. We've got David Hunt, Mary Forashevsky, Peter Isherwood, Nick Williams, Dennis Lee, Maurice Byham, Brian Adams, who are members of the committee or a substitute. We also have at the back Bob Upton in attendance, welcome Bob, and we have Paul Follows, Andy MacLeod, and Scotty Fraser. Good evening to you all. Right, if we start the meeting. There are no minutes to agree, I understand. I'm going to ask Fiona whether any apologies have been received.
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from Councillors Stephen Hill and Anna James, and Councillor Dennis Lee is attending as a substitute.
Thank you. Declarations of interest?
None received, Chairman.
Any declarations of interest that anyone would like to mention now? No, thank you, members. The purpose of this evening's meeting is to scrutinise and overview and scrutiny of the Local Plan Part One, which is going before a meeting of the Special Executive next Tuesday, and after that, on Tuesday evening, to the meeting of the full council. I would like to invite Elizabeth Sims, the Head of Planning, please, to introduce the report that we have in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, members. You clearly have the officers' report before you, and I'm also conscious that most of you attended the briefings earlier in the week on this report, so I will, with the Chairman's indulgence, keep my introduction fairly short. If I could briefly say, as you're seeing the report, that we are an important milestone of Waverley's local plan. Many of you will recall that against the backdrop of legislation in 2004, the council has been attempting to update and replace its current local plan, dated 2002. You'll be aware that successive governments have since then reaffirmed the role and importance of a planned-led planning system to enable local planning authorities to plan and respond to development in a positive way, which reflects a locally agreed strategy. And without a local plan, local authorities clearly have far less control over development, where development management decisions have to take into account the most up-to-date policy and strategy position. Earlier versions of the plan were withdrawn in 2007 and then in 2013, so we are at a critical juncture in terms of the council's aspiration to put in place a new local plan to allow it to regain control in terms of development management decisions. In terms of the background section of the report, you'll see that the local plan's been prepared in two stages, as agreed by the council, following the withdrawal of the plan in 2013, and it is the Local Plan Part One, which is the strategic policies and sites, which is the focus of the current discussion. But members will be aware that Part Two of the plan, and indeed neighbourhood plans, are being prepared in close succession, and they are waiting for the adoption of Part One to enable them to progress. Local Plan Part One was submitted to government for examination in December 2016, and the examination hearings took place last summer. During those hearings, the inspector considered objections to the plan against the evidence base, and the local plan inspector set out his preliminary findings. Importantly, the inspector made clear that for the plan to be found sound, main modifications would be required to be included in the plan, and he agreed the headlines of those modifications with the council, so that the council could be clear about what he, the inspector, was expecting to be amended before he issued his written report. The list of main modifications was worked up and noted by the executive last August, and they were then agreed by the inspector and consulted on. Following clarification on certain issues, the inspector's final report was received and then published on the website on the 1st of February. Chairman, I would now draw members' attention to the inspector's headline findings, as set out in the officer's report. The inspector has found the plan to be sound, but critically only with the inclusion of the main modifications. In other words, to be absolutely clear, the plan that we submitted to government in 2016 was unsound, and it is only with the inclusion of all the main modifications recommended that the plan will be sound. Chairman, the inspector's report identifies three main issues upon which the soundness of the plan depends, and they're set out in full in our report, and these are, in summary, issue one, whether the plan makes adequate provision for new housing, issue two, whether the spatial strategy is sound, and issue three, whether the development management policies are sound. These are all summarised in the report, and I hope set out clearly. The conclusion, though, is that in respect of all three issues, that subject to the inclusion of modifications, the plan is sound, in the inspector's opinion. Before I finish my summary, Chairman, I think it'd be helpful just to draw out for members' attention the benefits of adopting the plan, as we've set out in the report, because these are key to members' consideration of the issues before you. Firstly, adoption will give Waverley a long-awaited up-to-date local plan and render key policies up-to-date. It will also enable the council to more effectively resist speculative inappropriate development, and, as we're aware, over the last few years, we have had real challenges in defending inappropriate development due to the lack of an up-to-date local plan. The plan-led system will mean that development management decisions will need to follow the plan, including on appeal. It will be the starting point for development management decisions and planning applications. Related to this, the council will be much better placed to defend its position with regard to a five-year housing land supply, and a key advantage will be to local communities wanting to complete their neighbourhood plans, because neighbourhood plans have to be consistent with strategic plans, and adopting the plan will provide the correct platform for neighbourhood plans to move forward. A further benefit is that the adopted plan will allow the council to move forward with the adoption and implementation of the Community Infrastructure Levy, SIL, to provide the necessary infrastructure to support growth. Finally, Chairman, the flip side of the coin are the significant risks to the council, and if I could just summarise those, and these are the risks of non-adoption. Waverley would be increasingly vulnerable to further speculative and unplanned development, and it will be even more difficult for the council to defend a five-year housing land supply. The inspector's report has confirmed the housing requirement of 590 dwellings per annum. Now importantly, this housing requirement will not fall away if the plan is not adopted. The inspector's report has established the acceptability in technical terms of this figure, and without an adopted local plan, the council, and then the neighbourhood plan groups, will lose the ability to distribute that growth and also the benefits of the overarching policy framework that will support and shape that growth. Similarly, the inspector's report has established the principle and planning terms of the suitability of Dunsfold Park as a new settlement. Without adoption of the plan, the council will lose an up-to-date policy basis upon which to shape the form and design of future proposals on the site. Chairman, a further risk of non-adoption is that the council will be at risk of government intervention in providing a plan for the borough. We did avoid this threat by meeting the government's deadline for submission in early 2017, and other authorities who did not are currently being targeted, as you may be aware, for remedial action by government, so there would be reputational implications for this council if we were to be back in a place of not having a local plan. Non-adoption would be particularly disadvantageous to the neighbourhood plan teams in their attempts to get plans adopted, particularly those parish and towns allocating their own sites in the absence of an overarching strategy set by the local plan. And finally, in the absence of adoption, it will be much more difficult to move forward with SIL, and we will experience a loss of potential income to fund infrastructure. Chairman, I trust that's helpfully summarised the headlines of the officer's report. Members, the officer's recommendation, as you'll see in our report, is that you pass any observations on our report and the inspector's report on to the executive. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Elizabeth. That was very succinct. I think as far as process is concerned, and the way that we're going to run through this, what I'd like to do, just because it's the done thing, is to start off with members who are not members of the committee, councillors who have indicated to speak, and allow them to ask their questions, because that's what we normally do at the beginning, after the officer introduction, and that is councillor Paul Follows and councillor Andy MacLeod. Just give me one second before I introduce them. We will then, I think it might be helpful if members perhaps run through the Yellow Sheet of Comments, if you've all had a chance to look at that, after we've taken those questions, because the questions might be answered in there. So we won't necessarily get the officers to answer the questions that, assuming the statements that are made by councillors MacLeod and Follows, it depends on what those questions are. We will then run through, with members, the introduction that's been done, and what issues you might have, and whether there are any showstoppers that you consider. We've all had letters, I think, through and emails today from people with issues that people would like us to raise. I hope that we can do those as well and still get home at a sensible time. So we've only got the one item on the agenda tonight. I don't see that we're going to have any major issues that are going to take us all evening, so I'm hoping we're going to be done out of here by nine o'clock at the latest tonight, if that's okay by members, but as long as it takes, because our job is to scrutinise this, the public are going to expect us to do the job. We know in our rules of planning, when we come along to, when we join this council, join planning committees, the rules that say that in planning committees, the officers are here to represent the council and we are here to represent the electorate. So, you know, we're doing the job of representing those people out there, we know what their views are, we share them, some of them are frustrating, but we want to make sure that the issues that they raise with us do come forward tonight and that we get answers to those if we can, without it taking all night. Now, I'm going to ask councillor Paul Follows if he would like to speak. If he wants to separate it into questions, he's welcome to, but let's see what he has to say and I'll see how we're going to handle it. Councillor Follows.
Thank you, Chair. So thank you for being able to attend and to speak this evening. Just to say a quick thing first, so I understand we need to pass this, and there are significant risks to non-adoption, especially as we heard that at the briefing last, earlier in the week as well, but there does seem to be significant weight, even when this plan, even if it's not adopted, and it was underlined, a message from officers that it would be inadvisable not to pass this. However, I would say, taking the failure of the two previous incarnations in 2007 and 2013, as an indication that these things are never foregone conclusions, and there does seem to be some method of changing these things if necessary. I would just say, I'm a new councillor and I wasn't involved in the construction of this plan, and so it's quite a lot to get up to speed with very quickly, so I urge anybody else who's present here, who has been involved in it more directly, that if there are hard questions that haven't been asked, please do ask them, because I'm sure these are quite complicated subjects and there's a lot of questions that need to be asked. So my questions, so two from me and one from some member of the public, a member of my own party that wrote to the Farnham Herald. So my questions first. Do the recent developments in the air quality statistics that we saw today reported, do these have any, in any way, affect this plan and its evidence base? I'd just be curious for absolute clarification on that, in case at any point was part of any, of any of the things that were actually formulated within this plan, considering that they seem to be under some, somewhat of a question mark, as of this morning. My particular question on Aaron's Hill, so policy RE2, which is part of this, MM12, Aaron's Hill's part of my ward in Gotherming, is that boundary what we consider to be the end point? I was just wondering if you could at any point comment on what Guildford's plan might do to that boundary. I know that that's not particularly part of our plan, obviously, but I'd just like to know what the full extent of that development theoretically could be, if Green Belt from Guildford is also taken out. My last question from a member of the Liberal Democrats, we just want to understand, with the uplift in housing and the requirements that have been effectively mandated by the inspector, and I understand this has been mostly distributed proportionally by town size at present, can I just ask for formal clarification of the rationale of why this was not all put at the Dunsfold strategic site, or at least some of it? Because a larger area would potentially allow a good concentration of housing and infrastructure, more sustainable development, which would benefit the whole borough, because we all wouldn't lose Green Belt and have development in all of the other parts of our towns. I think that's all from me. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. So that's three questions there. Do the air quality statistics and what we've read in the press today affect the plan and the evidence base, or how do they affect it? And the policy RE2 in respect of Aaron's Hill, which is Eishing Lane, development in Green Belt, and how do Guildford Borough Council's plans fit into that, or has it fit with those? Because we understand the inspector's going to be the same person for Guildford. And the uplift in housing, the rationale of the decision, why don't we, why haven't we put more at Dunsfold to save other places, save the Green Belt presumably and that? Okay. I think before we answer those, it's probably a good idea for us to take Andy MacLeod's, and we will, and I may possibly bring, allow you to come back with a supplementary, because you're so new to the chamber, you haven't had the opportunity to look at this a great deal, and you might have more, but only if we've got time and if it's appropriate. Councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I ask any question, I'd just like to make one or two introductory remarks, actually. I think the chairman mentioned residents, and I'd just like to make some comments on the residents I talked to and deal with in Farnham. There's a great deal of confusion amongst residents about this local plan, and I have to say, a fair bit of anger actually, particularly in terms of how it's affected the Farnham neighbourhood plan. The Farnham neighbourhood plan has taken a great deal of work to produce over three, four years, and as a result of the public inspection and what's happened subsequently, it's going to have to be completely reconsidered, and due to this extra 450 houses that we've got to have. And the residents generally are very confused about planning, actually, and they've seen three, three attempts to produce local plans for Waverley. One a long, long time that probably everybody's forgotten about, in about 2006, '07 or something, but people still remember the 2012 plan, where we were planning for 250 houses a year, and that was thrown out because the inspector said that we should be thinking about 700. And we've now moved on to the 217 plan, where we were planning for 519, and as a result of the inspection, it's now gone up for 590. So this is causing a lot of confusion amongst the public, they don't understand why, and as I say, it's causing a fair bit of anger. But despite all that, I do accept Elizabeth's arguments, actually, I do see the reasons why we have to have a local plan for things like, if we don't have a local plan, we won't get the CIL, we'll lose control, we may ultimately be put into special measures, all that sort of thing. But despite all that, actually, I don't actually see this plan as a plan as such, it's more of an aspiration, in fact, a very optimistic aspiration. If I could ask members if it'd be good enough to look at page 37 of your papers, that shows a table that's meant to represent what this plan's going to produce, and remembering that we're supposed to be doing either 519 or 590 houses, you can see in the first four years of the plan, we've only been producing between 100 and so, and 300 and so, and we're supposed to, in the current year, produce 477. That's not going to happen either. I checked with the planning, and we're in chadro to produce something like 200, maybe 250. So what I don't understand, actually, and what I'd question very much, is how is this miracle going to occur in the next three or four years, where in a borough that's never produced more than 300 to 400 houses in any year since about the year 2000, we're suddenly going to manage to produce about three years from now, 1300 houses, and each year, in the year after, 1000 or so? This is just not going to happen, actually, because we don't, as Elizabeth said, we don't produce the houses, we're dependent on the developers to do it, and they're not actually doing it, and they're not actually going to do it either. So my question, I guess, is how is this miracle going to occur, that is shown in, shown in the plan? And secondly, should we not be having a contingency plan for what happens if this miracle doesn't actually happen, so that we're not shown to fail, so that we can actually predict what will actually happen and have some control over it? The other point I'd like to make is I don't accept the inspector's argument, therefore that this is all going to happen, sustainably going to happen, and the inspector doesn't seem to have taken into account all the constraints in Waverley. The constraints about traffic, the constraints about air quality, water quality, the greenfield land that we have, and the constraint of the special protection areas that surround Farnham and surround other parts of the borough. So I guess I'm making more of a statement, asking a question, but I'd like to make that statement and leave the question hanging, how is all this going to happen? So thank you, Chairman.
Quite well timed. Thank you both of you for very comprehensive and very intelligent questions, that's something we can work from. So really, you know, are we going to, how's this miracle going to occur? Do we have a contingency plan and constraints, traffic? Can I take the first two questions of Andy MacLeod and ask those probably best to ask of Elizabeth Sims, unless somebody else wants to? So that is, is it realistic, because we're not meeting those numbers, I think that's what he said, and, you know, it's not going to happen, how's the miracle going to occur? And then, is there a contingency plan? So could you just give us some sort of idea on that, please?
Thank you, Chairman. What I would do, actually, is draw members' attention to page three of the Yellow Handout addendum, because councillor MacLeod helpfully asked this question at the briefing earlier in the week. So we have sought to capture that there, and as I said on Tuesday, do you understand the concern about completion rates? And a lot of people have expressed that, about, well, that the plan envisages a certain number to be developed over the plan period, is this actually going to be achieved? But the planning system can only follow the rules, deliver a plan, and then grant planning permission. Councils, local planning authorities, don't actually build homes, and they're therefore not ultimately, at this present point, accountable for whether the homes are actually built. All we can do is have an aspiration and have that aspiration captured in a plan, and inspector comes to the conclusion whether he agrees that it's deliverable, and that's exactly what's happened. The inspector has agreed that the plan is deliverable, and there was a lot of discussion during the local plan hearings about whether or not that the number, particularly at Dunsfold, will be deliverable in the plan period, and the Dunsfold team actually had to defend their case that they could deliver that number in the plan period. So there has been scrutiny in respect of whether or not the number of dwellings proposed will actually be achieved in that period. Ultimately, we have to defend a five-year housing land supply, and developers will take us to task in terms of whether or not the expectations of the plan are achievable. But the good news is, the inspector has found the plan sound, he does find the allocations at this point in time deliverable, and that is good news. But the plan is monitored, that is a requirement on the planning authority, and we have to return that data to government, and at some point in the future, we will have to review the plan, and that will also take into account whether there's any backlog. So it does actually come back to a point where we have to recognise deliverability in the future as well. But as we stand at the moment, it isn't a matter that we can find fault about the plan, because the plan in the end can only allocate the sites, it can't be absolutely accountable for whether the dwellings are built. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, you may come back on that if you wish, Councillor Slavat. Quickly, please.
I just want to make it clear that I'm not actually criticising the councillor or Elizabeth and her colleagues, I'm actually criticising the system. The only one comment I'd make about something Elizabeth said, she said the council is not held accountable. I've, I've seen that various planning appeals, that the council is held very much accountable by the barristers to the other side, and even by the planning inspectors, who actually, they talk about the council having failed to produce the numbers, that is actually what's said, and I've challenged that, and the inspector's said at these appeals, that's the way we talk. That's the way we talk about it. But we are very much criticised by the developers' barristers for not having produced the numbers, even though we've got no control over it. So that's the only point I'd query a little bit on what Elizabeth said. But I want to make it clear, I'm not criticising Elizabeth or her colleagues, I'm criticising the system, in fact, that they're trying to work within. Thank you, Chairman.
Do you feel you'd need to come back on that at all?
No, only to say, I understand the point that's being made, but I think what, what happens at appeals is we're criticised for not allocating enough sites effectively, and where we've fallen down, so we haven't had an up-to-date local plan which identifies enough supply. But I think, I think what I was trying to say is, in the end, clearly we can't be held accountable for actually building the homes, and I think that's your point entirely, that the system is requiring local planning authorities to do what builders do, but it's not, it's not pragmatic. But we can't do any more as a planning authority than do what we're required to do in procedure and law, and that's, that's what we've done. So thank you very much, councillor MacLeod.
Yes, thank you. So I think as far as the miracle occurring, that's not in our power, that's up to the builders, and the contingency plan, well, there couldn't be reviews, that seems to be fairly simple, isn't it? As well as the answer you have in the Yellow Sheet. Okay, now, members. We'll take those as we go through. I'm going to, I want to ask councillor Adams first of all, because I'm slightly confused. Are you here as a portfolio holder, councillor Adams? Because I'm not, I didn't know you were still, I wasn't quite sure.
I'm not a portfolio holder, no.
You're, you're not a member of our committee, are you?
Well, I thought I was, but apparently I'm not, no.
Nevertheless, I will allow you to, to, to make some points, but I just hope that the other members won't string me up for it.
I would just like to enlarge slightly on what Head of Planning has said. Yes, the reason why the barristers have been pressing so hard is purely because we haven't got a plan. Now that we've got a plan, it takes away that opportunity for them to press so hard on the appeals on sites which are not in the plan. So that's the first point. We do suffer if those houses are not built, and I'm sure that the Strategic Director has, in his capacity as finance, taken into account that we won't be getting so much new homes bonus if these houses are not built. So it's certainly in our interest to try and encourage the building of the homes.
Thank you. We're here representing the public, and I'm not, or the electorate, I'm not entirely sure they'd agree with every word, but I think, would Graham like to come in on that?
Well, actually, Chairman, I wasn't going to come in on that, noted, thank you, councillor Adams. It was more about how we address the questions. Would you be agreeable, Chairman, for us to respond to the questions as we go? Because I'm conscious that councillor Follows asked three questions, and I think the officer team are lined up to respond to those, and I think to do the questions justice, would you mind if we did them as we, as we go? I think it would help the flow, but you're the chairman, so clearly you will.
Well, actually, I was, I was hoping that what, that we might be able to work through and do Green Belt first, which is one issue we touched on, and then separate, but I'm happy with whatever members want to do. Would, would members prefer to separate us up into sort of issues? Or would you prefer to have questions and dot about everywhere as people's questions come up? Just questions as they come up? Okay, okay, thank you, members. Nobody's arguing with that, so I'm happy with that. It may seem to people on the webcast that we're dotting about a bit, but they can put up with that. Right, councillor Follows has questions. First of all, can I ask a member, first of all, in respect of the air quality statistics, the newspaper reports today, so I've only just learned about this afternoon, in, as to what's been released, how does it affect the plan and the evidence base? Would you like to take that, please?
Thank you, Chairman, if I could answer that. I can say very clearly, members, you can be absolutely confident that the evidence base in respect of air quality that was used to inform the plan is sound and the most up-to-date air quality data available to the council, and it is the 2015 published statement, which is the 2014 air quality data. So it coincided with the preparation of the evidence base back in 2014. So you can be confident that the air quality information fed into the plan is sound and verifiable. Thank you, Chairman.
I think that would have to, there would have to be a question, how? How can we be confident that that information, as, as things stand, we have been told that there are problems with, it would affect, will affect two years of reporting. There's a legal requirement that we do the reporting from the Air Quality Directive, that we... that we report every year. I think members of the public would be surprised, and perhaps would like to hear a little bit more about how we can be sure at this stage, with what they've seen in the newspaper, that we can just dismiss the question by saying, well, everything before, that was fine. Does that, the public will look at it as it's being unsound. So how do we satisfy people that, or how do we make sure that if we put this through on the basis of that air quality reporting and actions on air quality are sound, then, you know, there won't be an easy challenge for them? Because the last thing we want is a challenge to this. So can we be absolutely certain that the reporting prior to the two years that, which we know about, where there are errors? Can we be certain of that?
I can be unequivocal about it, there was no issue with that data. The council's made a statement, which I know has been picked up in the local press regarding the data that has been withdrawn from the council's website. And without going into, because the council has explained why it cannot, the issues why that's been withdrawn, the data on which forms the evidence base for the local plan has not been withdrawn from the council, and we are absolutely 100% confident that data is correct. That's all that we can say, but we are unequivocal about that in respect to that data.
Okay, thank you. Now, Paul Follows's next question was policy RE2 in respect of Aaron's Hill. So this has got to the point where I was going to steer us, Green Belt. Guildford Borough Council's plans for the boundary, I think his point there was that we find that our inspector, Inspector Bore, is going to be looking after Guildford, that we're leaving the boundary until LPP2 to decide it. I'm wondering, is the inspector, if the inspector is going to do the same for the Guildford Borough Council plan? Because it seems from what he's written in this report that he is doing so. I mean, I don't know whether councillor Follows is, what I read from it is, do we have to take those housing, that Woking's housing, if Guildford can take some of it? Would you like to explain a little bit further, councillor Follows?
That's exactly what I was thinking. Effectively, if that boundary is uncertain, or we don't know whether parts of Guildford will be taken out of the Green Belt, I'm just curious what the theoretical scope of any development on Aaron's Hill might be? Because obviously, the people of Gollaming don't just stop looking beyond a boundary line on a map. So I'm just curious to how far it could go, and if the Guildford Borough Plan, which is being inspected by the same chap, will have any relation to that.
Who'd like to pick that up, Ian?
Yes, I'll answer that, Chairman. Okay, right, so when we submitted the local plan back in December 2016, we didn't set out, remove the Aaron's Hill site from the Green Belt. At that time, we were proposing to look at this as part of Local Plan Part Two. However, Mr Bore did thought that that left an unnecessary degree of uncertainty, it's covered in 111 of his report. And therefore, he proposed that we clarify that by removing the land at Aaron's Hill on our side of the boundary from the Green Belt in Local Plan Part One, which is, which formed one of his main modifications, MM12. And the council agreed with that approach. So it's not being dealt with in Part Two of the local plan. However, of course, we can only influence the land on our side of the boundary. We are aware that the landowners of that site have aspirations to develop the section to the west of Aaron's Hill in Guildford. As I understand it, the Guildford local plan, as it's submitted, does not propose to develop or remove that land from the Green Belt. However, of course, this has to go through the examination process, just like Waverley's plan has gone through. So we do not know at this point whether that position will change, but at the moment, the promoters are looking at our part of the land only.
Thank you, Ian, that rather makes more sense of what the inspector, the wording he used in his report, because he said that it would rationalise the boundary. And of course, without Guildford doing the same, what he said was nonsense. You can't put a square lump and rationalise a boundary by making it much, you know, by putting a big lump in it, so that would make sense. Does that mean that, firstly, is he predetermining Guildford's site? I don't know. There's a question whether, how this works, I suppose you have to do it that way, we can't really complain about it. Does it mean we don't have to take, or we wouldn't necessarily need to take so much because we know that Guildford can take that housing?
I'm not quite sure that was the point. I think that the inspector felt that, as set out in the local plan, in Plan Two, in the chapter on Green Belt, I think the inspector, our inspector, felt that that land could come forward on its own without the Guildford land, but left it open, I think, for, you know, potentially an extension of that site in Guildford if the position changed. But he didn't want to prejudge what was going to happen through the Guildford local plan examination. Obviously, at the time, he didn't realise he was going to be doing it.
Right, thank you. Now, other members now, I'm just going to park the other question of councillor Follows, the uplift in housing, for a minute, so that I can go around members of the committee, if you've got any comments in relation to Green Belt elsewhere, Green Belt particularly at Aaron's Hill, that's what we'll start with. So any comments from members in respect of the Aaron's Hill, Eishing Lane, Supervet and all the rest of it, problems that we might have if we're going to be building up there? And any relationship with Guildford, members? Mary?
Thank you, Chairman. Just on the point of Aaron's Hill, this has gone through the examination process, and we can't predict what Guildford's going to do. So we have to look at this in its own marriage, and that's what the inspector has done. And he's found that the plan is sound. So there's lots in there that we don't like, and there's lots that we do like, but in looking at adjusting anything at this stage, it can't be done because it's been through the examination process, it's before us to make a decision, and it's up to us to scrutinise it this evening, so we put our comments forward to the executive. It's done on a basis that it's on the information that it's been found sound, with ensuring that the main modifications have been addressed. But I think we should stay clear of Guildford is a completely separate issue, because I think there's one or two perceptions out there with regards to the Woking unmet need. And all I would say about the Woking unmet need is that we didn't have a plan at the time Woking did, which is why we're picking up the unmet need, and the longer we leave it, the longer we're going to pick up unmet need from anywhere else. So let's look at what's in front of us, it's been through the process, we can only comment on what's before us this evening, we can't do anything to adjust it, change it, all we can do is work with what the inspector has said and approve and adopt as a recommendation, in my opinion, going forward to executive. Thank you, Chairman, for listening.
Not at all, no, I think you're absolutely right, inasmuch as if we are to query the taking of some of Woking's unmet need, then that would require a change and it would take time. We'd be looking at a six-month, possibly nine-month period with consultations, that sort of thing. So we can't do it as a small modification in this. So we would, on that issue, be either saying yay or no, we recommend that the executive do or don't. We wouldn't be saying, try and put in a modification and bring the numbers down, we can't do that, and you're right in that respect. I would like to, obviously, the members of the public, we've had some people write to us in respect of those, we want to try and cover those. But any other members wish to speak on Green Belt issues? Binscombe or Milford, perhaps? Yes, David?
In 2015, we stood on a manifesto not to build on the Green Belt land. I was disappointed that the tract of land in Binscombe was recommended for 35 houses to be built on. In spite of this, I'm confident we will achieve the housing numbers without building on this land. So I will support the adoption of this local plan.
It's not really your place to do that in the scrutiny committee, because we're scrutinising it, and we haven't got to the point where we've come to any conclusions, but I know exactly what you mean. You're happy with Binscombe. I did have a letter, I've received a letter, possibly others have too, I don't know, from a resident of Binscombe, questioning the removal of the Green Belt there, being within 50 metres of a number of, well, a conservation area, a very historic, and a lot of historic buildings, whether that had, I think, been taken, given proper consideration in SEA, I would think that's where soundness would come from. Is, you know, have we done a heritage assessment, have we, or a conservation area assessment? Ian?
Well, certainly the inspector, Jonathan Bore, was satisfied with the removal of the Binscombe site from the Green Belt. He would have been aware of the issues around the site, the constraints, the site is in the land availability assessment as well, where heritage issues were highlighted as an issue that would need to be dealt with through any future planning application. So it would obviously be dealt with heritage issues at the detailed level, are dealt with through a planning application. But Mr Bore was happy with the principle of removing that land from the Green Belt to facilitate additional housing.
Thank you, Ian, I think that almost takes us around, Robin, back to where Andy MacLeod was, you know, is this realistic or not? We can have it in the plan, but whether it's deliverable ultimately or not, the inspector's happy it is. So we sit on that, and perhaps the residents see what they can do to make things better as it is part of our numbers for the time being, certainly, and if we recommend adoption, if it's adopted, regardless of what we recommend perhaps. Okay, now, I've also received a letter from, in respect of Green Belt also, from someone representing, a professional representing the Milford Golf Course, the land next to it, who have a covenant over the land, I understand, which they say they're going to fight, which I think is probably the same sort of issue again, where it's in the plan, the inspector's said it's okay, but whether it's realistic or not. I don't know that this has been covered on the Yellow Sheets, has it? Can you perhaps explain, is it right for us to put through or adopt, would it be right for us to put through and adopt a local plan where we know there are likely to be serious problems with delivery, even if the inspector's happy? Or, you know, where we know that there are restrictions which perhaps are not under our control? Can you first explain how much they are under our control? I mean, as far as removing, if we're able to develop on Milford Golf Course, then we're going to have to have those removed. Is that an easy thing? Is it realistic for us to have that in there, the loss of the Green Belt?
Thank you, Chairman. Generally speaking, land ownership issues, as members will be aware, are not material planning issues. In this instance, with this site, representations were made that development of the site was constrained by a legal covenant. So it became a matter that was relevant for the inspector to consider whether this site is deliverable. There was a lot of debate at the hearings and representations made, and the inspector, as you'll see in his report, came to the conclusion that in the interests of the public interest, and that would be in terms of delivering housing on the site, there was a reasonable and significant chance that the covenant would be lifted at the appropriate point through the appropriate process. And I'm sure my colleagues will give you the technical legal side of it if you want that. But that's the simple conclusion, that we come back to the point that councillor Forrester has just made, that that question was raised and aired and discussed at the hearings, and the inspector took into account the various representations and came to the conclusion, as he set out in his report, that that site is an appropriate site. He said quite clearly, he felt it was a very well-chosen site, and also that the legal restrictions were likely, there is a likelihood that they would be lifted. So in other words, it's deliverable, it's appropriate, and there's no, in principle, objection to it as an allocation. I don't know whether our lawyers want to add anything to that, whether that covers the question.
Daniel, yes?
Thank you, Chairman. I just to reinforce the point, really, there were quite extensive discussions before the inspector, both at the hearings and in subsequent correspondence with the inspector from the council, and for those representing both the Milford Golf Club itself and local residents who are particularly involved in that. So there was a huge amount of assessment of that particular site. Just to draw your attention to paragraph 122 of the inspector's report, which is on, I've got page 44 on my papers, and he just says there's an 88-year-old covenant on the land limiting development to 27 dwellings, covenants are not normally planning matters, but it has been suggested that we're delivery restricted to only 27 dwellings, this would not represent the exceptional circumstances required to support the change in the Green Belt boundary. However, the need for housing land to be made available in the public interest and the strategic exceptional circumstances for Green Belt release point to a reasonable prospect of the covenant being varied, modified or discharged under the section 84 of the Law of Property Act 25, to enable a full capacity of the site to be achieved. He has taken his considered view, bearing in mind, as I say, quite a lot of discussion on this point. Elizabeth's addressed, you know, how relevant it is to the planning authority. We're satisfied that he's addressed it in the right way, and we're confident that that site, you know, should be released.
Okay, I think there's another angle to this, which comes from the councillor MacLeod angle, I suppose, which is if it's not able to come forward, which we don't have control over, then does that housing have to go elsewhere in Milford? Or would we then be redistributing that to Granley or Farnham or whatever? I mean, you know, what is the situation if we know that we're putting forward sites which may be difficult to deliver? Are we going to end up with those elsewhere? I think that's something which residents are concerned about.
Chairman, I think I'd just refer you back to the answer I gave when we were discussing councillor MacLeod's question before. It just comes back to the process of being confident in an adopted plan, that this has gone through a process and is deliverable, and then as required on the planning authority to monitor the delivery of that plan. And if for any reason sites aren't delivered, or certain numbers of dwellings are not delivered, we have to keep that under review and monitor it going forward. And at some point in the future, we have to take stock of what hasn't been delivered, if that is the case, and to make adjustments in a further plan. So it does catch up with us, and we have to watch it closely, but it isn't a reason for not supporting a site when it's been through the process it's been through, we've found sound, and the inspector's placed confidence on its deliverability. That is all we need as planning authority to be aware of. That's sufficient for us to say that contributes to a sound plan, and we can have confidence in it. And then, as I say, it'd be down to future monitoring, but there's no reason to believe it won't come forward on the basis of the conclusions of the inspector. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So, members, you've understood that it will be, you know, anything that doesn't, can't be delivered, could come back to us later on. It's just the way it is, and it's, you know, this is a paper exercise sort of thing, it isn't entirely real life. I've got councillor Isher indicated to speak, actually. councillor, Peter?
Thanks, Chairman. Just looking at some of my notes here of the two happy weeks I spent last summer in this chamber, listening to the whole debate. And believe you me, I've got the notes here of what the inspector was saying about Milford Golf Course, the Green Belt, and everything else. He said, his words were, "It is deliverable." He said that at the time. He talked about Aaron's Hill and that, the conservation area and everything else, and I'm quite clear from my notes here, that it was discussed at the hearing, as the officers have just said, and many discussions have taken place on the memoranda since then that are in the report. So, you know, I'm just saying that that was well discussed.
Thank you, Peter. Dennis?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, you raised Milford because it does appear quite extensively in the report, and being a resident there myself, obviously, quite a number of things are going to affect my wife and I and other members of Milford. We have a situation, don't we, where I believe we've got to be very careful to separate out conjecture and what-ifs beyond what is accepted and what is concluded in these reports. And I find it counterproductive, really, to go down that theoretical... And I find it counterproductive really to go down that theoretical line. We have here a plan, and I'm very conscious of the thousands of hours that have gone into producing this plan and the thousands of pounds that have been expended on it thus far. And I really do believe, having read carefully through the report and the thought that has gone into it, its examination by Mr. Bore, and he makes the point of trying to establish greater clarity at one point, and that has been achieved in my view. And so although it's not, so far as Milford is concerned, all my preferences, but they never can be because we're talking about a compelled number of extra houses and dwellings, we have the point that we have to accept that going forward as a plan. But in two, three years' time, things could be quite different, but I'm not prepared to, you know, and I don't think we should be prepared to even think about that. We've been presented with these factual figures and conclusions, and that, I think, is what we've got to concentrate on. And I can assure you that the two Milford councillors have been well aware of the point being made about this covenant now for a few months. And we do believe that covenants, because I've had a previous experience of them, can be overturned, given the right situation, and there's always ways and means. So I just want to sort of say that, that I'm reasonably happy with this. I am also a waverly councillor, and therefore we as waverly councillors have to think about the whole borough and what might not be particularly happy for us individually. We've got to think about the equitability about the whole borough, and I think that this plan covers that really rather well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Maurice, please.
I haven't prepared to speak about green belt because Bramley, of course, maintains its green belt and it's washed right over the village, which has some restrictions, perhaps within the settlement boundary but not too much, but obviously outside of the settlement boundary. Now, we think as a parish, we're coping reasonably well with the plans for housing that is required within the plan. Even the increased numbers, we think that we've been given, we can maintain. But some of that stuff, some of the areas that we think may be suitable for development, and because anywhere where you go outside the settlement boundary, you are in green belt and therefore you have the restrictions that are there. There are some areas where we believe that it would be prudent and reasonable to consider those as exception sites and therefore bring them forward for development. I recognise and have always said in public council planning meetings that I respect very clearly the officer's position that they must recommend refusal for those applications and that it's up to us as local members and local committees to consider whether there are exceptional circumstances or reasonable situations where that could be brought forward. I don't know whether any of this applies to anywhere like Milford or anything else, but... Do you mean I'm talking all this time without my picture on the screen? This is terrible.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You better wind up, Maurice, and come back again.
Shall I start again?
Is that Elizabeth's letter on the screen? Elizabeth, can you move your mouth at the same time as he's speaking? Make it look big for us. Jim Edwards lost the S off the end of his name the other day, didn't he?
So...
Is it still broadcasting or have we lost it? It's just... Okay, well, we're not going to run around the room in order that people can watch. I'm sorry, but smile. And if you'd like to continue...
I can't remember what I said, so I can't repeat it.
You're happy with the green belt in protecting...
What I was saying at the end of that point was that we as a parish and as borough councillors, they're representing that parish, and I've said for many years that I am happy to bring forward sites that are exception sites, and we've been doing that for many years or had the opportunity to do that, and I'm happy. What happens with the local plan, as I understand it, and I would like comment from the officers with regard to this, that if we actually end up with sites being brought forward, and I have some in mind in my own parish, where they're outside the settlement boundary, therefore green belt, bringing them forward as being reasonable exceptions or good reasons for exception sites, that those numbers at the moment do not count towards our number of dwellings that we're supposed to produce within our own area. I find that a little unusual, it's very strange rather, and of course means that we'll, perhaps if we loaded more onto parishes like Bramley, we would never ever meet those numbers because everything that we brought forward would have been exception sites. So whether Aaron's Hill or any other area within the borough where we're talking about change in the green belt line, whether that could have been done by exception sites, except you seem not to be able to count them towards our numbers, but they're just additional dwellings that come forward, I don't know.
Okay.
So that is my concluding question is, is it our interpretation or is it the MPPF or whatever interpretation that we cannot include those exception sites as part of our numbers for the amount of properties that we need as part of the plan to bring forward?
Okay, thanks, we've got that. Maurice is asking, exception sites that don't count towards local allocation? Question mark?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, certainly, the one answer is that any housing units that are built do count towards the overall target in the plan, the eleven thousand or so, the five hundred and ninety per year. So any house built contributes towards that. Each parish does have an allocation figure in policy ALH1. In the case of Bramley, it's ninety. There is also a windfall figure for the villages as well, one hundred and eighty-eight as well. So we have to be mindful that some of the housing that is built within the villages might be classed as windfalls and may not be able to be classed against the ninety dwellings, but that in a sense has to be looked at case by case. But in terms of the general point, we are aware that Bramley is very constricted and constrained by the green belt, and that does provide particular challenges for the neighbourhood plans in allocating sites outside of the settlement boundary, for example. I am regularly liaising with the Bramley neighbourhood plan groups myself to see if we can find a way forward on some of these difficult issues because we are aware that the green belt review, for example, didn't indicate any scope for changes to the green belt around Bramley, and that does give us some sort of challenges really in terms of moving forward. Because we are aware that Bramley, you know, they are quite positive about some development, and I want to try to work closely with them to see how we can help them achieve their aspirations, but obviously make sure at the same time that we aren't in conflict with the local plan as well. So hoping that there is a way forward there.
Okay, thank you very much. Mary, did you want to say another word on the green belt or are we on a different subject?
Thank you, Chairman. If you wouldn't mind, just briefly, I think we have to be very, we have to look at what's in front of us. I think the green belt and sites coming forward, Bramley or anywhere else in the borough, must come in part two, so we're looking at this this evening. But one little bitter pill I have to swallow is, one of the inquiries, it wasn't the local plan inquiry, it was another one, Bramley Parish Council had actually said that they would be happy to release a section of the green belt in Bramley for one hundred houses, but the inspector again has supported the increased numbers going to Cranley and Farnham. So whether we like it or we don't, he has actually found the plan to be sound on the basis that even with that in front of us, the allocations, the extra allocations went. And I think, generally speaking, I think, when we're talking about the green belt, we had to be very, very careful because the review that happened in the last few years made no points in the direction of removing it, and this council has got policies to ensure that the green belt is protected. And the moment we let that slip and we don't have a local plan, that is the whole of the borough at risk. So whilst Bramley's constrained, I wish Cranley had some green belt to protect it because look what's happened to it. I mean, somebody mentioned earlier about a miracle. It's a miracle we are where we are today, but it's the most bizarre, bizarre thing to find that the smallest of the main settlements with no infrastructure, no railway station, has taken the biggest proportion of housing onto greenfield sites, which are exception sites. But the inspector has found, whether I like it or loathe it, I have to accept it because that's what the inspector said. But I think we need to be very cautious about talking about the green belt at this time, it's not relevant. If I could, Chairman, with your indulgence, please just make a point on delivery as well. Because I know myself and councillor MacLeod, whilst on the SIG, we talked about this in depth, that it's not our job to deliver, it's the job of the developer to deliver, but we have to take on goodwill what is before us, that they will deliver these sites. But what's going to happen, and I think it's common sense because the market will drive, there's market forces out there, with the numbers, it's going to be virtually impossible to deliver all of what you're delivering. And if you do, you're going to flood the market, drive prices down, and it's not in the shareholders' interests. So what you're probably going to get is those sites will remain deposited into a housing bank account until the developers find that it is now viable to do so. And that's where I think it's a separate argument. It's where, I don't know whether the leader of this council, the leader of other councils should get together and lobby Westminster, because there should be penalties for non-delivery.
I think that's another issue. I don't really want to get into that because we'll be here all night if we do that.
It is, it is absolutely, but it does help explain, Chairman, why in part one, we are where we are, we have to accept it, and issues around deliverability and penalties don't come into it at this moment in time. Thank you, Chairman, for your indulgence.
Did you want to comment, sir?
I'd like to comment on deliverability, yeah.
Right, yes, please do.
Thank you, Chairman. And since Mary stepped on to that, I'd like to comment related to Andy, councillor MacLeod's comments. I don't believe they'll deliver the numbers either because I don't believe the bills will build twice as fast as they've been doing to date. Obviously, nothing that suggests the market will change in that way, unless, of course, there's some massive opportunities created for building council houses in the way that I think there's funding going into Woking and Guildford. But today, we're looking at this local plan, and to me, if we don't have the local plan and we're not getting five hundred and ninety houses delivered per year, we'll have developers coming at us with all sorts of harebrained locations that they want to build on and saying, "Yeah, but you're not building enough, so you've got to build on this greenfield and that field," that have got all sorts of other denominations as well. So I share the view that it doesn't reflect reality, but I'd rather have these words documented for people like Elizabeth and Ian to use than to have developers pinching any bit of greenfield in the way they pinched, the one you'll be familiar with is Baker Oates, and I'm sure we can all think of sites that are near to us that shouldn't be being developed on, but there'll be houses soon.
Thank you. I must say, I disagree slightly with what councillor Foroshevsky is saying in as much as I think our role here is to, because we haven't had the opportunity previously to look at the inspector's conclusions. We've got an inspector's report in front of us and we're here to scrutinise it, not to turn around and say, "The inspector said what he said, and therefore we've just got to put up with it and vote for it," because that's certainly not what our members of the public, I apologise if I've misread what you're saying, but I think that we have a serious role in making sure that what the inspector has put in front of us is saying we've got to take these numbers and that he considers all sound, whether he's correct or not, and that's our job, is whether he's correct or not in that or whether there's something we need to bring forward. I want to move on slightly sideways from the green belt issue now because I think we've sort of exhausted that, apart from the angle that, my understanding is that green belts can only be removed from a green belt, or new areas included within it, in exceptional circumstances. It has to be exceptional circumstances, and the circumstances that we've got that certainly, I would say, have to cover the inclusion of Aaron's Hill, Yishin Lane, because it turned up later after the numbers, you know, it can be said, I think with pretty much certainty, that the exceptional reason for including that in the green belt is because the inspector wants us to take half of the unmet need of Woking Borough Council. Now, that has been questioned, it's been questioned by a number of people. I have asked, I wondered whether you are able to, whether an officer is able to explain to us, I think we've all at some point read the note, the submission that was put in in response to the main modifications consultation in September. There was a submission by CPRE where Neil McDonald, NMSS, a very well-respected consultant who worked within the department, he had participated in the examination during the summer, and I think everybody respects what he said there and had brought the numbers down, they bounced back up again. Can an officer please explain to us, I'm not saying that whatever you say is necessarily going to take as being, "Yes, we can't change," or "No, we can't change the numbers," or "Yes, we can change the numbers," but can you give us a response to the position that Neil McDonald has taken? Because there's a lot of people out there, residents at home, I'm sure, who want to know why we are rolling over and allowing the inspector to tickle our tummies and we're just going to take these numbers that he's added because he says we've got to take the Woking's numbers, and respected people have said not, and we need to be able to justify our reasoning if we're going to say to the executive, "No, we're not questioning this." We need to be able to justify our position. So could you help us with that?
Thank you, Chairman. I think there may be two issues here, but correct me if I'm wrong, but you made reference to the Neil McDonald report. My understanding is that the Neil McDonald report was produced and argued that the basis of the local plan objectively assessed need requirement should be the 2014 population projections, which were produced after we'd started the preparatory work for the local plan, and the local plan was very advanced by the time they became available. And the council took the decision, in the light of the fact that we were charged by government to get a plan submitted by 2017, that we wouldn't go back and remodel our figures and start again, and we'd press on with the figures that we had used, which were based on the 2012 population projections. And that discussion was held and the 2012 figures were continued to be used in the submitted plan that the council agreed and then went on to examination. So that document out there by Neil McDonald was then submitted into the hearings and those that had commissioned its preparation spoke in favour of those conclusions being taken into account.
You're going back prior to the examination. I'm talking about the McDonald report that was commissioned and submitted in response to the main modifications in October, I think it was.
Okay, so just to finish what I was going to say, which I think is quite perhaps helpful to other members, members may recall that actually at the time of the hearings, the inspector had a debate, the whole of the first day and probably the second day of the hearings, about what our population, what our housing requirement should be, and in fact agreed at the hearings that Neil McDonald was right and we should use the more up-to-date population projections. And that had the effect of reducing the OAN starting point, which in the first instance was advantageous to Waverley because the figure came down, but then the inspector then proceeded to recalculate the figure, taking into account migration from London and also taking into account the Woking unmet need figure, which resulted in the higher figure by the end of the hearing. So that was the first report that's produced. I think if you're saying there was a second one produced by Neil McDonald in relation to the main modifications, the inspector took into account all representations submitted on the main modifications and came to the conclusions that he did, which we've already summarised this evening, that the plan is sound. So perhaps you'll remind me... So perhaps you remind me, Chairman, of exactly what it is that Neil McDonald raised in relation to his modification. But whatever it was, we can be categoric because we know we sent all those representations to the inspector. He would have taken it into account and still came to the same conclusion that the plan is sound. So unless colleagues have got anything to add to that, perhaps I have to leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, yes, I'll, I'll find that because fortunately he did manage to sum it up in, in three pages of a 14-page report it was because I reread it yesterday. Yes, if I pass over to Wyatt whilst I find that, thanks.
Listening to you ask that question, I wondered if we got a bit muddled in there. And maybe I can help with how I think the answer needs to be phrased. I think my colleague is concerned as to what people looking, thinking through this process will be thinking themselves in a concern. We've got a situation where Woking, correct me if I'm wrong, has got unmet need because it's largely constrained by the green belt. And we're being asked to take some of their unmet numbers. But our plan, which he's agreeing, says pinch some bits of green belt in order to build, to make the numbers that we've got to find. So are you saying that Woking's green belt's more important than Farnham's green belt or Cranley's green belt or Waverley's green belt? Because you're pinching from Peter to pay Paul and letting them off the hook when... Now, I think the answer is in the, is in the sort of time sequence of events that at the time Woking got its plan agreed, nobody knew that to me, that their demand wasn't as high as it's now calculated to be. And nobody had any idea that trying to palm stuff on us would mean we'd be using a green belt. They were able to get theirs through perhaps when things were a bit easier and we, we missed a trick. But, so that I think is the kind of, of situation we're in. And then go back to my feeling, and I think councillor Foraszewski's supremely this, well, that's tough, but it sure isn't as tough as not having any plan at all. If you want to add to that, Elizabeth, please join in, or maybe I've missed a point.
All I would add, Chairman, and just picking up the point that you've made, councillor Ramsdale, is in relation to the Woking unmet need element, I, I, I said it at the briefings earlier in the week and I'll say it again. My personal feeling is that's probably the most unpopular part of the inspector's report. Because it seems to some extent rather unjust that we're already trying to accommodate quite a large housing requirement. And then out of the blue, it would have appeared we were being asked to take more. But one, one thing I would reassure members on is that the requirement through the NPPF, and that's where it starts, and that's why the inspector was applying it, requires planning authorities to address housing need, including unmet need in the housing market area. We have a joint housing market area with Guilford and Woking, we're both, Woking and us, we're Guilford-centric. I know a lot of people have queried that in the past, but there is a lot of rational sense in that housing market area because of travel-to-work patterns, and it's been proven there is a link between the three authorities. So we are where we are with that. And the fact, because as you say, because of the timing of Woking's local plan being a much more previously adopted core strategy, there was an unmet need element that needed to be addressed. Those that attended the hearings will recall, the inspector was absolutely adamant that the plan we submitted, which did not actually address Woking's unmet need, it just expressed through the duty to cooperate, will continue to work with Woking and support them to pick up their unmet need, or words to that effect. The inspector found that to be fundamentally out of sync with the requirement of the NPPF, which requires authorities to seek to pick up the unmet needs. So what he did was appropriate in terms of the NPPF, whether we like that or not, that's what it says. The plan would have been unsound had we not embraced that. So whilst it is unpopular, it, it was, it was the right technical outcome. And as you say, it's about timing. Eventually, Woking will need to update their core strategy. They'll have to start with a new housing, strategic housing market assessment. They'll need to have a baseline of what need is, and they'll need to consider whether or not they're capable of picking up the unmet needs of other authorities in the housing market area. So you don't know, but you may find a time whereby perhaps if we haven't delivered everything our plan, there will be pressure on them perhaps to be picking up some of our unmet need. But I said that on Tuesday and I did caveat it with, with the bitter pill that, of course, they are surrounded by green belt and that's not going to change. So even if they review their plan, they're not suddenly going to be pressed upon to take masses of housing on, on land because most of their land is restricted and it is a difficult one. And yes, some of our green belt is being released, but the bottom line on that is we have actually proposed that release in certain locations to meet housing requirements of our settlements. And those settlements that are most constrained by green belt are not taking very much in proportion. So we are preserving our green belt as much as possible. But there is an argument for, for Godalming, for example, that to have taken no extra housing would, would not be fairly meeting the needs of, of the Godalming community. Because locally in Godalming, there are needs that need to be met. So I think-
Can we go to, please, to the evidence base behind the, behind the inspector's decision that we need to take this 590? I'll find the document from CPRE. And it is, the, let, let me just give you some four parts of it. He says, "The calculations of proposed additional housing requirements based on a series of assumptions, each of which is highly uncertain. A, he says, "The estimate of the objectively assessed needs of Woking comes from a 2015 Sma that's untested in local plan examination, includes a large and potentially contentious uplift for homes to support job growth." He says, "B, the planned housing requirement is based on the long-defunct South East Plan." He says, "C, it is assumed that those two numbers will hold good until 2027." And he says, "It's assumed that half of the estimated shortfall ought to be met in Waverley despite it being a very different district from Woking." And those are four points. I mean, he goes into detail of the elasticity of, of housing affordability, which we probably didn't ought to get into here tonight. But we received a letter today, if I just read out a couple of lines from it. It says, "DCLG's own data published as part of its Planning for Homes consultation in September 2017 shows that 63% of Woking's land is covered by greenbelt, national park and SSI's. They don't have any AONB. For Waverley, the figure is 64%, and that, and that isn't including AONB." So, you know, where is the evidence base? I saw no, at the time, and questioned it, and I've been trying to get answers to it for a long time since, in respect of the soundness of the inspector's position that Waverley has not got the constraints that Woking has. I mean, we're not that close to working, Woking's got, is far better, as is Guilford. I mean, my document in front of us somewhere, certainly within the local plan papers, tells us that, that Guilford is in far better position to, to support Woking's unmet need than we are. The documents here, I can see, and I've heard of no evidence that, that supports his position that Waverley is far less constrained. I mean, we do have two SPAS and a SAC. And if you take the seven kilometre and the nine kilometre and the five kilometre zones for the three different sections, it covers right over past the A281. And the only places it aren't actually covered are Cranley and Shamley Green, oh, and Rowley. And, you know, I've got a friend in Rowley who won't want to hear that, but, and, and also Euhurst, obviously the Far East of the Borough, which have got their own possibly environmental protection in terms of water and certainly drainage issues. There's a lot of concern that the, I think councillor MacLeod brought this up, so it's a good time to bring that, bring this in. The constraints that there are on Waverley, you know, are these exceptional, the exceptional reasons for, for digging into our green belt? They're based on what Mr Boar said about the numbers, us having to take the, the extra numbers. Is it, you know, could it be the case, is it, I, I don't, I, I know that it will extend matters if we try and change it and we can come to that, to look at that, you know, perhaps separately. But do you feel, do you have any evidence that he's right about that, what he says? Is his position sound? Is his position good? That Woking is, is far more constrained than Waverley is? Because the figures I've got here, they only tell one side of the story. I'd like to hear the other side. Whilst you're looking for that, I'm going to ask councillor Ramsdale to speak, he's asked.
But, Mr Chairman, I think you're missing the point. And we should be saying to ourselves, "But does it matter?" This is not a group that can start opening or sending recommendations to executive to start a negotiation with the inspector to change things. This is the proverbial, "Take this document as it is or no document." So does it matter? Even if the inspector has made a mistake, and, and I haven't seen any indication that that's the case yet, that is what he's put. That's his conclusion. And that conclusion will be used against us, whether it's contained in a local plan with all the positives of the local plan or is simply left there such that developers in the future will use it as the, you know, the learned person's dictat as to what could be done in, in Waverley. So with respect, I think you're just wasting our time.
I'm not here for you, I'm here for the public. And they want us to look into the big issues on this and our job is to scrutinise. We are the Environment, Overview and Scrutiny Committee. You know, the big issues, it's down to whether this is sound or not. And the question of whether or not the, the inspector's position is sound is very important, particularly in respect of the environmental constraints. And, I mean, we have, as other councillors have said, you know, our local plan has failed twice. We've got, the decision-making process, the, the people who are watching this out there look at Waverley's decision-making process and they hear people say, "Oh, we don't want to scrutinise that, let's just get on with it, we've got to do it. We've been told we've got to push it through fast." And every time, years and years pass by afterwards and things go horribly wrong. You know, it's, it's time that we started doing the, the job properly of making those decisions in, in full knowledge of what the situation is and what it's going to be. So I'd like to bring in, bring, bring back Elizabeth, if she would, if she'd answer about the, the relative environmental constraints and the evidence. And Graham, Graham, welcome to add if you wish.
Well, Chairman, all I was going to say was, I think Elizabeth wants to make a comment. But, I mean, what, what the committee's been asked to do today is to pass comments to the executive ahead of council. And so I think, you know, if there's a sticking point, then, or there's a view on a certain aspect of the report, then that can be recorded and, and passed through. But I think Elizabeth is going to make a comment on the specific point that you were making.
Thank you very much for that, Graham. And Elizabeth? I do appreciate that all of our, all of our officers that we've got sat here with us, as, as with the vast majority of our members, this is all an inherited situation. Everything to do with local plans, we've inherited. It's not our fault, but going forward, if we make wrong decisions, we have to take responsibility. So, you know, it's, it's, we've got to simply get to whether this is sound and can withstand a challenge. Because if it can't withstand a challenge, we, we're going to end up with no local plan for a long time. And that will hit other cer- certain areas. So, sorry, Elizabeth, please do.
Thank you, Chairman. I, I, perhaps to just draw this particular point to a conclusion, I would ask members to consider paragraph 39 of the inspector's report, which is page 25 of your agendas. Page 11 of the inspector's report, paragraph 39. And that, that was his conclusion in respect of the ability of the borough to accommodate the planned growth over the planned period. And critically, he concludes that none of the evidence suggests the need for policy intervention on environmental grounds to reduce the housing figure below the identified requirement of 11,210 dwellings over the planned period. And slightly earlier than that, he said, well, the first part, in conclusion, "Whilst recognising the borough's planning and landscape environmental designations and concerns about traffic, there is no convincing evidence that 11,000 or dwellings over the planned period cannot be delivered in a sustainable manner." So that, that is the paragraph which captures his, his formal comprehensive assessment of the technical evidence where he'd arrived at this figure and nothing before him suggested that environmental grounds or in terms of the constraints of the borough, the borough could not accommodate that growth in terms of the spatial strategy that had been submitted. And I can't add any more to that point, Chairman, than to say that was his conclusion. As councillor Ramsdale has said, we, we just need to accept that he's made that conclusion and found the plan sound on that basis. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Would, did you want to add to that, Graham? Okay, let's move on from those issues there then to the other. Well, let me open it up to members first of all because you've got our issues that you want to bring up. But I do want to get back to Andy MacLeod's point of, of the constraints. So perhaps your questions about that, I don't know. Mary?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I admire greatly your passion and your desire to get this right, and I wholeheartedly support that. But I think Graham made it very clear there that this committee tonight has got a role. And the role is to look at the document in front of us and not recreate it or do anything else other than put forward our recommendations. Chairman, I would ask you, and I would ask members, to just look around the room this evening. This is the single most important subject that this council has faced in decades. We've been waiting since 2002 for an opportunity to shape, have control and do something about planning, planning now and planning for the future. There's, we've got a gallery with one member in it. We have virtually no fellow councillors here. So I'm not suggesting for one minute there isn't an appetite, because there is. But having said that, we, we do have a responsibility, but our responsibility now for those who sit back and want us to get on with it, is to get on with it. As I say, we've waited since 2002, we've been through the process. We've, we've, as, as a, as a council, we've made mistakes in the past, we've tried to put it right. It's not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. And what I would not do is further subject the residents to Cranley to even more unscrupulous development because we don't have a local plan. And I cannot here, sit here tonight with my hand on my heart and say, I cannot, I would go to find fault with this or was I could not push it through. We have to, we, in my opinion, we have to put it through because it's the only mechanism for security for going forward to stop this being developer-led and actually Waverley-led. So, Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If I can just finish in, in the sense that we have to look at it what's before us, whether we like it or we loathe it. We've got a figure of 590. There's evidence base, whether you dispute it or not, and I think Graham's quite right, if there's a dispute there, take it offline. But I think it's high time, we made this decision, took this to full council, got recommendation and actually got forward, got on with the job and stopped wasting any more time whilst we lose valuable parts of this community to developers. Because that's it. What's, what are the consequences without it? The consequences are that more and more, more and more developers will take us to task because an inspector has set the precedence. So if we don't adopt it, we are failing Waverley as a whole because we are subjecting them to development-led rather than planning-led by the council. Thank you for your indulgence, Chairman.
I, I fully appreciate that there is a, there is a mindset which says that this has to be adopted. We've had this so many times, I've seen the council do this. It's got to be put through now. Our members of the public want to know, and there's no reason why we shouldn't scrutinise this. If you're correct and this is okay, and this is good, and it's the best thing for us to do, there should be no problem with scrutinising it, as far as I'm concerned. You know, I would like to, to be able to justify our decision to the members of the public. I know that on Tuesday, it's going to be a political meeting with everybody saying, you know, emotions involved. This isn't the meeting for those emotions. This is a meeting for the facts. I'd like to pick up on a couple of things which you have mentioned there, if I may, and, and ask the officers to confirm. If there were a delay of, whether it be two, two or three months or six months in order to either put phasing in, that's necessary into this plan or something which needs changing, which, I mean, phasing actually, I would imagine, might possibly be a, something which could be done without going to further consultation. But changing housing numbers certainly couldn't be. But, you know, that's what the public, that we've got, we've got a lot of towns and villages which are preparing their neighbourhood plans. And the message that I've had from them, or that I appear to have picked up from them, is that they don't want these numbers. They don't want us to say, "Oh, yeah, bang these through" so that they can get on with doing something they don't want to do. They want us to be, to, to be looking and seeing whether or not we've got to take these numbers. And we have got significant constraints. So, Elizabeth, if we were having, oh, I'm not sure, maybe a lawyer who, who should answer this. Do we have an officer who can tell us specifically in relation to the areas that are outside of the visitor catchment areas of the SBA? So that's everything pretty much east of the A281. So that's everything pretty much east of the A281, because they're outside the nine kilometres of the Weldon Heath's Phase One. So, we're looking at, Bramley's okay, that's just within it, and Wunash, I think, is also, Shamley Green isn't, and Cranley and Euhurst. What are the risks over the next few months of development coming forward that we wouldn't be able to? Because I think councillor Fallow said earlier on, and I take it that he wouldn't have said it if he hadn't asked him if it wasn't true, that the fact that we've got this far with this plan provides some protection, not the ultimate protection of having an adopted plan, of course, in the same way as Farnham neighbourhood plan provides some protection. But that's adopted, so if this isn't adopted, Farnham's okay. Can you tell us, what's the situation? Is there any real risk? We've heard the risks, but that was pretty broad brush. Are there any real risks over the next three or four months to Cranley? Because that's really the place which is going to get hurt. If there were a habitats challenge, whatever, it would prevent development elsewhere, so it wouldn't be a matter of, the rest of the borough wouldn't need to worry, Farnham's covered, but Cranley I'm worried about. How much risk is there?
Yeah, I don't really understand, I mean, the risks are the risks, they're set out in the report, they are the real risks. There are no other risks, those are the risks. So, I think what you're asking for is, are there any hidden risks you're not aware of, or really serious risks? They are the risks, they're in the report, and we've set them out very clearly. Can I just come back to the idea that it might be some sort of phasing here, or wait? That's not an option, there's no negotiation with the inspector anymore, he's done, in terms of his report, it's with us. So there's no going back to the inspector and entering into some kind of negotiation over these numbers. There are fixed options as to what the council can do here. Either adopt, or it withdraws the plan and starts again, and we've already heard about what the significant risks are there, which is we're back to appeal-led planning within the borough. The other, one other option is that the council judicially reviews the inspector's report. We, as a team, legal and planning, have considered this report really very carefully, and we don't think there's any scope for doing that, and that's not an option for us. And the final option would be to defer and ask the Secretary of State to intervene under section 21 to overrule the inspector, and for much the same reasons, the judicial review. Our professional judgements are that that's simply not a goer, if I can put it like that. There are no other risks, Chairman, the risks are in the report.
Okay. Members, do I have anybody else? I want to move on to the constraints, but Peter? Councillor Isherwood, sorry, you wanted to speak?
I was thinking some time ago of one phrase that was used, if we don't adopt the plan, the developers will move in, and the easiest place to dump more development is Cranley, because they're not protected by Green Belt. I mean, my own area has seen an increase of over 20% in a location that is geographically challenged for housing development, it's surrounded by Green Belt, the National Trust and everything else. And I do think that we have to move forward. We've been waiting a length of time, great length of time, for this plan to be adopted. Here we have protection, we can move forward, we can introduce SIL, we can improve our infrastructure, we can do a whole load of things that certainly won't happen if we don't adopt it. We've been talking this plan through for years. We really must move on. We need the protection that the plan, Part One, will give us, and then we move on to Plan, or Part Two of the plan. And that's when the other local plans, I talk about Hazamere's neighbourhood plan as well, and there are others that will be coming along at the same time, we need them. We delayed that. We went as advanced as Farnham, their plan is made, but in the fullness of time, I'm sure there will be amendments to that to take it through. So, I find the inspector has...
I understand exactly what you're saying. What you're saying is that you don't want any scrutiny of this, which I just find absolutely amazing.
I did not say that at all.
Well, okay, well, let's look...
And I was here for every day of the inspector. I actually went through a number of things, and at one time I wrote 578 would be the number that we came out with. He came out with 590, maybe I didn't get the migration from London in that number. But he was very clear, he was clear on everything he said. We've had plenty of chance in the interim to put our views forward. Here we have a report that's very clear, and I have scrutinised it, I've read it.
Thank you very much, indeed. Councillor Adams, before you come in, I just want to ask whether, members, are you aware that there's an outstanding Natural England objection on two grounds to this? Are you aware, are members aware of that? Have you scrutinised that? Because, you know, it's something which you would normally consider in any planning decision, it's been mentioned in the documents, and it's on the, you probably will have heard of the Weldon judgement, which is not to do with the Weldon Heath, it's to do with Weldon District Council, and areas of Sussex, and actually protecting the Ashdown Forest, and it's to do with nitrogen deposition from exhaust fumes. But it does have a particular implications for us, very strong implications. I'm not sure whether councillor Adams is aware, because I think he was our representative following councillor Isherwood on the Joint Strategic Partnership Board, but the JSPB members have been asking for information in respect of that, so that we can complete our local plans, and I've got the documents with me if you want me to give you exact quotes. And that is, well, they were very disappointed at the December meeting that what they'd asked for hadn't come forward, and it's going to be coming to the meeting on March the 8th. So, you know, at the moment, I think the position is that there's no appropriate assessment, because they have, I mean, I understand the officer's position, they have a position that we're going to do this with monitoring, we're going to work with other councils. But, you know, we have got these outstanding objections from Natural England. If, I would be happy to go forwards and move with those, if you want to, but are you aware of that issue? Can I ask you, and please do tell us, you do want to come in, councillor Adams?
Aware of it, and the reason it wasn't dealt with in end of January is because the Natural England didn't turn up to the meeting. That was a very simple answer. Everybody was expecting them to be there, so that it could be thrashed out, and they just didn't turn up. So that was that. So that's why we've got another meeting on March the 8th.
There was a January meeting that nobody knows anything about, then?
Well, I did, because I was...
It's taken a year to get the papers released, nobody let us have them, but...
Sorry?
It's taken more than a year to get the Joint Strategic Partnership Board papers for about the past six or seven years released into the public domain, and I've received them, I've spent a lot of time going through them, and there's a lot of interesting information in there.
I can't remember which day it was particularly, I think it was...
But it was in January, you had a meeting...
It was in January, yeah, it was at that meeting, and Natural England didn't turn up, and that's why we're having another one on March the 8th.
Okay, and at that meeting, you're going to be given a presentation in respect of...
Unfortunately, I won't be there, I'm hoping that councillor Isherwood will go in my place, because I'll be on holiday.
Lucky you. Of my works, because everyone else is on holiday. Okay. Yes, we have got that issue there, and, you know, this ultimately comes down to whether or not an appropriate assessment, whether we're sound in our plan.
It's not a serious objection.
It is the reason that Weldon, that the courts quashed that part of a core strategy of a local plan.
But, yeah, but it will be sorted out very quickly, once National England turn up.
If it was that easy, it would have been done so. I mean, if you go through your JSPB papers, you'll confirm, I'm sure, that we still have no evidence that mitigation works, we can't produce an appropriate assessment, and we haven't got one, we'll get challenged. And that's my concern here, and I think people are ignoring the fact that there's...
Everybody is assuming that the mitigation is satisfactory, and that is not just us, I mean, it's every borough that is involved in the JSPB, so it's not, sorry.
Well, Chairman, I think Elizabeth's got a comment that might pull this particular aspect to a conclusion, so that we can...
Please do, yes, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Chairman. I just, you started by drawing members' attention to the Natural England's concern, and I just think it's really important that we clarify that position for members' information. So, with your indulgence, I'm just going to ask Gail to set the scene in relation to the compliance of the plan with the habitats regulations, and indeed where this Natural England concern fits in. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, please, Gail.
Thank you, Chairman. There's just a couple of parts of the report that I would like to draw members' attention to. The first paragraph is 103. Apologies, I don't have the same copy of papers as you, so it's page 40. Of the agenda papers. The first point of objection that Natural England raised in their response to the main modifications consultation, it was in relation to the housing uplift, particularly in Farnham and the absence of identified strategic sang. Paragraph 103 starts, "Natural England did not raise objection to the council's approach in the submission plan, but has raised, sorry, but has suggested that the plan is unsound in respect of the additional 450 dwellings in MM3. That is not the case. There is no prospect of harm to the SPA, because permissions affecting it cannot be granted without suitable avoidance and mitigation measures." And if I just draw your attention to the final sentence of paragraph 106 on the subsequent page, it reads, "The evidence does not indicate that the plan is unsound, either because it needs to provide more strategic sang, or that housing delivery in Farnham would be delayed or presented because of the inadequate availability of sang." So the process is that Natural England have, yes, raised an objection, but I think you'll agree that the inspector has dealt with it within his report. The second point I'd like to draw your attention to is the penultimate page of the report, which is page 34, and my papers and my colleague will tell me which page it is in the agenda papers in a second.
Forty-eight.
Page 48. You'll see there, there's a table of legal compliance. The fifth line down relates to habitats regulations assessments, and the inspector concludes that habitats regulations assessment screening has been carried out, together with appropriate assessment for each of the five European sites in the borough, and the effects of MM3, which is the housing uplift, have been considered in the HRA addendum. Therefore, he concludes that the plan and the modifications are legally sound. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Yes, I mean, I'd noticed what he said there, and obviously, the issue is whether or not it's true, because we're here to scrutinise it. He says, appropriate assessment for each of the sites has been carried out, yeah? And HRA screening has been carried out. I was going to ask, what's the definition of a habitats regulation assessment? Because it doesn't really exist in law or anything, as far as I can see. It's obviously a name for an assessment for the English side of it, but I think you'll agree, I just wanted you to confirm, that the overriding issue here is that the law requires that an appropriate assessment be carried out, because that's the habitats directive, and it has direct effect. So if we don't even understand what HRAs are, the fact is that what we have to do is carry out an appropriate assessment, that is correct, isn't it? And you're saying that we've done those?
So, an appropriate assessment is what the law refers to, a habitats regulation assessment is the first stage of an appropriate assessment, where you would assess any likely significant effect that might occur on any SPA or SAC. If the likely significant effect is determined in that screening stage, you move to the appropriate assessment stage. And I'll refer you to a document, the habitats regulations assessment document for local plan part one, which has been updated with the housing uplift for the, in the HRA addendum of last year. There is on page 35, an appropriate assessment for Thames Basin Heath's SPA, on page 42, there is an appropriate assessment for Weldon Heath's Phase One, and on page 52, there is an appropriate assessment for Weldon Heath's Phase Two SPA, none of which has been, raised any objection to by Natural England.
Well, one of the objections that they have outstanding is that it can't be assessed, that's on the air quality side of it, but thanks very much for that, Gail. As far as appropriate assessment is concerned, it's actually only got a very narrow definition. It isn't really defined by Europe anywhere, except for in the law, is it? And what it says is that an appropriate assessment has to be, has to contain convincing Waddensy evidence from the Waddensy judgment, C12702, and that it has to be against the conservation interests of the, and this is a point I've been making for quite some time. When you're carrying out an assessment, obviously there's an element of it which is a risk assessment, what's the risk to the habitats, what's the risk to the endangered species we're trying to protect here, what's the purpose of the law? It's to prevent harm to those species, to stop them being wiped out. So, and the inspector's report from the 2007 local plan, South East Plan, for instance, identifies Article 4.1 of the Birds Directive, we have to consider the bird numbers. Now, I haven't seen any bird numbers anywhere, and so we haven't done any appropriate assessment. And that's a real concern for me, because it's a very easy challenge. There is also in those assessments, there is absolutely no assessment of whether sangs are effective, and we know the JSPB have enormous difficulty with it. And I think you will have to confirm that the law requires convincing objective evidence that there'll be no. So, can you just confirm, we don't have the convincing objective evidence required by paragraphs 13 to 21 of the Statutory Instrument Circular 06/2005 that's referred to in paragraph 113 of the MPPF, its policy, it goes to whether this is sound or not? Because we do, confirm that we do require convincing evidence, and we do not have an appropriate assessment with bird numbers, or with any assessment of the mitigation, because that is a real concern, and it applies to right across the borough. Almost all of the borough is protected by this directive, and a lot of people aren't even aware of it.
I'd just like to draw members to the point that the inspector, in his considerations of the plan and its soundness, has considered the technical evidence that ACOM have produced for us on numerous occasions, that has been consulted on, it's been included, you know, we've had consultation responses by Natural England, and he has concluded that there is, that the plan and its modifications meet the legal requirements of the habitats regulations assessment.
Okay, perhaps if I go to Daniel and say, can you confirm that the constraint is that we cannot adopt this lawfully unless we satisfy circular 06/2005, the requirement for convincing objective evidence? And if we don't have bird, an assessment with the bird numbers in, so that we can see the risk we're taking, and if we don't have an assessment of the mitigation, then it would be very difficult for us to claim that we have conducted an assessment, because that's my position.
No, I'm not going to do that. Gail has answered, I think, as fully as officers can regarding the appropriate assessments here. If in due course, Natural England or anyone else believes that that element of this report, this inspector's report, is challengeable, then they'll be entitled to bring a challenge within the six-week period, assuming it's adopted.
But we're not allowed to, sorry? We're not allowed to do the, I mean, you know, if it's the right thing, if it's obvious to us that we have to be convinced by scientific, I mean, I can read it out.
Can I finish? Sorry, can I finish? Because that is...
And we don't have it.
Sorry, can I finish, Chairman? That is what I'm going to say, is that Gail has answered that question about the appropriate assessments. If Natural England or any other body or person wants to challenge on the grounds of, you know, in respect to the habitat regs, or anything else that's covered by your points, then they'll be entitled to do that. We are, as I think I've said in the previous answer on another point, satisfied, we've assessed this, you know, very carefully, and not just since receiving the report, but all throughout the examination process and before and preparation of this plan, that it is sound, and that that evidence base is correct, and that it's been approached in the right way. That's all I can say.
Okay, so, I mean, it doesn't matter how many times I ask, have we got the convincing objective evidence? I won't get an answer to it. Elizabeth?
Can I just add to this, Chairman? Because it's really important to come back to Natural England, and Natural England are clearly the expert statutory body here, and they didn't object to the plan in terms of its approach to mitigate an effect on the SPA. The only concern they raised, as we've already said, is latterly in relation to the uplift, sang hasn't been actually identified for the remainder of the planned period, but the inspector addressed that, disagreed, and found the plan to be sound, because it will be provided in relation to planning permissions. Fundamental to your question, Natural England are satisfied with the appro... with the approach to mitigating the likely significant effect on the SPA in terms of the provision of sang. And I think that's the question you're asking, is how can we accept that form of mitigation without evidence? Well, in my view, Chairman, the determining authority on that, as to whether that was a sound approach, has to be Natural England as the statutory consultant. They are the arbiters as to whether or not, in planning terms, development can be mitigated against its impact on the SPA through various means, and sang has been found to be an appropriate means and agreed by Natural England. And that is the salient point, that we can be confident the approach is sound, because Natural England have agreed with that aspect of our strategy. Thank you.
But we are the, we are the authority making the decision on Tuesday, and it's up to us to obey the law. It's not them, and it's the, and the courts have found that, I mean, CO604, case, CO604, Natural England are not above the law, and it's our decision, not theirs.
But I would add, Chairman, I think it would be highly inadvisable for a local planning authority to adopt a different decision on such an expert matter than the relevant statutory competent authority. No, sorry.
You're absolutely right.
The statutory consultant. I don't think there would be a valid reason for challenging the view.
I absolutely agree, because we're in two positions, aren't we? Where we're saying that...
Mr. Chairman, can we move on, please?
Yeah, Natural England object. So we will move on from that. I think the point's been made there, and I will take that up separately outside of this meeting. Graham would like to come in at this point, I think.
Well, Chairman, I think if we're moving on, I don't, because what I was going to say was, we set out at the beginning of the week with the briefings to ensure that members had the opportunity to ask questions. I think this is a very detailed legal line that you're taking officers down, and that there was the opportunity following the briefings to take some of these matters up with the officers, and we've still got time before Tuesday. If any particular member has a specific point that they would like officers to look at, we can do that, and we made that offer at the briefing. So could I suggest that we reflect tomorrow as an officer team, and if there's anything that we feel we need to come back to you on that hasn't been resolved, then we will endeavour to do so?
Absolutely, absolutely right. I mean, you understand, we'll knock that direction on the head, but that was the reason our first local plan was failed. The question was, where is the Waddensy evidence? And we still can't answer that question. So that is my concern. Mary, you have indicated to speak.
Sorry. Thank you, Chairman, and forgive me for keep going on this evening, but like you, I'm very passionate about this. And I think you raised some valid points, and I think Graham is right, and there's an opportunity for you to take that offline and discuss it and get the answers that you need, that you can feed back to this committee in due course. But Chairman, forgive me, I like you, I like you a lot, but I do resent the fact that you said that there's no scrutiny. I've been on this council for a number of years, where we've done nothing but scrutinise the local plan. And if I can take members back to 2013, 14, we produced a local plan at the time that was fit for nothing, and we said at the time, some members argued in this chamber, in isolation, that it was not going to be found sound. Now, to the credit of Waverley Borough Council, and to the credit of Elizabeth Sims and her team, and to the credit of members, they have pulled their finger out, they have done what they said they needed to do, and they have produced a sound local plan. Now, if it was left to a previous administration, cross-party, but a previous administration, we'd be sat here scratching our heads, still dilly-dallying about taking Guilfors on met need and every other person's on met need. But we haven't. What we've done is we've knuckled down, we've got on with the job. Against all the odds, a SIG was formed, it produced some excellent information to help go forward.
We are going to stick to the issues in front of us, which is the soundness and lawfulness of the plan, please.
Chairman, if you please, with your indulgence, if you just let me finish, to say there's no scrutiny is not fair, because we've scrutinised it for years, not weeks or months, but years. And if you're asking me to take your opinion and advice against an inspector, having gone through the examination process, I'm going to have a little bit of difficulty with that, because the scrutiny that I've done is to attend the inquiry, to listen to the information, to participate as a member, and to fully investigate and scrutinise it. So when I make my decision tonight, I make it on the grounds that I believe, as a council and as officers, we are heading in the right direction. Failure to do so will fail this borough as a whole. So Chairman, can we move on and actually put forward a few recommendation observations, so as we can get a local plan that protects us going forward? Thank you once again, Chairman, for your indulgence.
Okay, thank you. I've got every fact that you want with you. I mean, I deal in the facts, and we're here for the facts and the evidence of the law, and that's what I want to stick to. You know, I happen to disagree with a number of the presuppositions that are being made here, but we can take that outside, and then we can... I think I understand what you're saying, okay. Other issues, I take it most people are happy with issues in respect of the economy in the local plan, but what about transport? Do we have any comments in respect of transport? And I'd allow either any other non-members of the committee to come in if they wish to, if they want to speak on that. Dennis, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I would just say that this particular plan is supported by the Infrastructure Development Plan, and that is very detailed in all the elements of infrastructure. And it can't identify the specific costs that are going to be involved, but it identifies in each case where the funding streams are likely to come from. So with that background, I am happy that the infrastructure elements are tackled to the state they can be at this particular time.
I mean, is Cranley, all the different areas of the borough, are they happy with what's being done in terms of transport infrastructure, and that it is going to, if it's provided through SIL, that it's going to be satisfactory? Is there anything within the plan that is unsound, as far as you're concerned? I mean, we may not be happy, but have you looked at it enough to be able to see whether there's anything in that's unsound? I did attend a number of, quite a lot of the sessions in the, of the examination in the summer, and still what was going on. Please, Maurice.
You talk about, well, first of all, we've got one minute to go, because you said we're going to finish at nine o'clock. Oh, it's gone. Well, you're quite right, the eastern area members, sorry, parish councils, excluding Cranley, I believe, object strongly and continue to make representations because of poor infrastructure. I cannot see any way that by turning down this local plan that we have before us tonight, and we recommend to the executive and then to the full council, that we're going to achieve any level of sustainable funding that would create the transport infrastructure that we perhaps deserve and need. And therefore, it's a pointless argument, we're beating our heads against the brick wall, and there's nothing more to do. So you will find that the 11 parishes that supported and continue to support their objection to a range of different things, largely around Dunstfold Park, of course, will continue to object. And this is outside the scope of this, because we're talking about the local plan, not the objections to Dunstfold Park. They're continuing with those objections, but the likelihood of us getting any level of decent extra funding towards transport infrastructure is the square root of something or other. But the local plan will help towards it in a large way with SIL, but that level of SIL will still not support the level of money that would be required to provide a proper transport infrastructure for that area.
Okay, we've just got a couple of things, I think, before we wrap up. I want to finally get an answer for councillor follows to his question in respect of the rationale re-putting development elsewhere, but not dumping it in Dunstfold, so to speak. But as far as Farnham is concerned in the transport issues, there is a concern that policy ST1, Sustainable Transport, Point Seven of ST1, which is that development schemes are consistent with the objectives and actions within the Air Quality Action Plan. Our Air Quality Action Plan, unfortunately, does, isn't a plan to improve air quality, and so we have a tie-in, we have a difficulty there, where this policy does not provide the protection that it would appear to provide. And I don't know whether that has been covered in the SEA, I'll have to look at that over the weekend, I guess. But a particular concern, which is in the McDonald Phase Three Report, which you recall from summer 2016, which fed into the Infrastructure Delivery Plan, that's on page 49 of the report, about two-thirds of the way down, with the proposals that they've got for Farnham, which are in this. It says in the PMP, there's a similar situation with more delays to A31 and A325 town centre eastbound traffic. However, the increase in delays in the centre is much greater, with knock-on effect on the westbound traffic and A287 in both directions. So, you know, there is a great concern that the Infrastructure Delivery Plan makes air quality worse, because it says it's going to. So, you know, that has to be considered. There is certainly an element, I don't know whether that makes ST1 Part Seven unsound, because all it's doing is reflecting one, paragraph 124 of the MPPF, that it has, that development must be in accordance with the Air Quality Action Plan. But I think that it may well be a problem with, possibly with appropriate assessment and possibly with strategic environmental assessment, part of the sustainability assessment. I don't know whether you want to say anything on that, but I will take it up with you out of the meeting.
Well, I could certainly answer the question from the councillor fellows at the back there, about why Dunstfold Aerodrome could not take more than 2,600 homes, which I think was the sort of original question. And I would refer you to page seven on the yellow sheet, the agenda item three. And this really is a question that was answered at the briefing sessions, which is near the top of the page. So with regard to allocating the extra homes to Dunstfold, it had been a significant issue as to whether the 2,600 homes in the original allocation can be delivered in the local plan period to 2032. And whilst more homes might possibly be able to be delivered on the site in a subsequent plan period, the inspector came to the view that it's not possible to put more homes there within the timeframe of this plan, and therefore the impact on Farnham is regrettable, but it is a shared responsibility. So that was Elizabeth's answer earlier this week, as to why more homes couldn't be placed on the site.
Okay. Members, we're going to perhaps try and jot a few things down. What did that say, though?
Bryan Adams.
It says Bryan Adams. Brian.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to emphasise some of the risks again. I don't think that we're taking the risk seriously enough. In the first place, the government's announced that there's going to be a major revision to the MPPF out at the end of March, which means that if we reject this plan and do not adopt it on our left in limbo, then we might well be caught by that change. And also, obviously, the development of this plan has crossed us a great deal of money. If we are left with, in limbo, with starting further change to the plan or a major update to the plan right now, then it's going to cost us money that we don't have. I mean, I've already raised the issue of the fact that the government makes the rules, but the residents pay for the cost of the operation. And any money that we have to spend in addition on this right now would remove money which would otherwise go to doing things that our residents really want. So I think that should be borne in mind when it comes to actually thinking about whether we adopt it now or not.
Perhaps we should have a referendum, ask the residents whether they want it adopted or not, because they're paying for it. I'm kidding. Okay, let's, members, are there any issues which Wyatt would like to bring up?
Thank you, Chairman. I thought we were trying to kind of conclude and wrap up on this, so I just wanted to share with people my clear view that, unlike many of the documents that come to us for scrutiny, this is not a draft on which we can sort of pass comment and ask officers to go away and come back in three months' time with an amended version. It's not even a version we can sensibly say to the executive, "No, you've got this one wrong this time, go away and do it again, pass it back to officers," because it's a take-it-or-leave-it situation. I don't like it. I don't like the fact we're getting dumped with numbers from Woking. I've got a whole series of things that upset me about it, and we've been in this chamber at different stages and argued them through. I can remember in the days when Elliot Nichols was still a councillor, and we had a UKIP opposition, and being jointly agreed with them, that the consultant telling us the schmar number should be whatever they are, was wrong. I think he was talking about stuff to do with the missing age group, and we needed to have more cheaper housing to attract people of about 24 to 30 years of age to come and live in Waverley, when so many of my relatives of that age group, well, they're living in south-west London. It's not house prices in Waverley that are putting them off, it's the fact it's not a taxi ride from the centre of London. We've had all that debate. We've got, as Mary said, an excellent piece of work that many of you have spent days seeing the inspector go over. Gerry and his detailed questions just leaves me tired out. You were asked to document them, present them to officers on Wednesday, but never got round to doing that. You're just playing a game of brinkmanship for the sake of people watching in the gallery, but he's gone, and the people on the TV screen. We have got to make a decision on this, or bust. Comments have been made about, it's too late for Cranley to get the local plan in place. If you want it to be too late for all the other towns, then don't support this going through Tuesday, and don't support it being, going back to the executive saying, "We're behind this, we want to see it in ASAP." And that's where I'm at. I don't like it, but I sure as hell don't want the alternative, and that's why I'm supporting it going forward to the executive, and will be again supporting it on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, but you do realise that I've been making these points and had been ignored in these points, although I was correct in 2006. Well, no, I was correct, and I was proven correct. And if you'd like to go through all the other things, whether it's the housing, council housing sell-off, and, you know, all the other E Street issues and everything, we'll go through them if you wish, but this isn't a place for doing that. I think what we need to do is to come to an agreement, because that's what I was hoping we were going to be able to do. I don't think that members are going to agree with my points, so we're going to have to note separately, I think, the points that I would like to be made here, that the chairman of the Statutory Committee queries the soundness in respect of lack of an appropriate assessment containing bird numbers and mitigation proposals, or assessment of mitigation proposals. Concern in relation to the outstanding Natural England objection, which is tied in because of the difficulty of assessing something if you haven't found the sangs, or if you haven't assessed the, done the modelling for the air quality. And concerns in relation to the approach to air quality, let's just leave it at that, because it's such a wide issue with a number of things going on, and I don't want to get into the...
Excuse me, Chairman.
...things going on. And members, if you wish, because obviously you've got a different opinion.
I wish to raise a question. You talked about a newspaper report. A, I haven't seen it, I've been doing other things today. I don't know what you were talking about on that. We had an assurance that the inspector had the right figures when the plan was drawn up. I don't believe everything are in the papers anyway, so could we remove that?
I think it's based on a press release from Waverley that's come out today, and it's about police investigation into the air quality issues.
That was yesterday. It wasn't in...
Can I just remind everyone that I think Chairman has accepted that he's in a
Can I just remind everyone that I think Chairman has accepted that he's in a minority of one, and he simply wanted to document his concerns on the plan. I wished he'd done it on Wednesday lunchtime when he was asked to, but the sooner the better. So let's get it down in writing, what his concerns are, and then, members, the officers can take that away and maybe address it again on Tuesday. I'm fairly clear as to where the rest of us are going, so I've said my bit on that yet again. But Peter, thanks for the observations there.
Well, we never did really come back to the answer. I think I've sort of tried to cover it in the questions, which I know have been fairly detailed, but it's proved the point that we don't have the mitigation, as far as I'm concerned, so I'm happy with stopping at that. Councillor MacLeod's issues, but that the, in terms of the housing numbers, the inspector, concerned that the inspector has not considered the, hasn't provided evidence to support his consideration that Waverley should take half of the unmet need of Woking.
Is this your list of...
No, and I don't think there's any great need. A proper assessment covers most of it and an SEA, because that's, sort of covers all of the environmental issues. But the committee is, recognises that there are advantages to putting the, to adopting the local plan. The majority felt, I don't know, how would you want to put it? You said it rather well, I thought, earlier. I didn't agree with you, but you said it quite well.
I think the committee feel that it's unbalanced. Despite concerns as to how we got here, we should be fully in support of the local plan as drafted, both in our response to the executive and our response to our colleagues at council on Tuesday. Mary's wanted to come in, if that's okay.
Yes, anybody else want... Sorry. Give Fiona a chance to make sure she's...
Yeah, that's all right.
And Mary?
Sorry, Chairman. Just one final comment, and thank you for allowing me to come back on so many occasions this evening. Chairman, members, nobody loathes more than I do what happened to Cranley. Nobody does. We fought long and hard in this chamber, at the JPCs, to try and defend Cranley, and we lost, because most of them were on, won at appeal. But whatever's happened in the past, an inspector has found the plan to be sound. But one of the big advantages of actually accepting and adopting the local plan is that we now have an opportunity to shape it going forward. So even with the development that's there, even with the constraints and the restrictions, we now have a position to take some control over what happens in the future. So Chairman, it gets my full support, because without it, I think it doesn't bear thinking about. But we are where we are. No one says we like it, but we've got it, and we can't dispute the fact that it's been found sound. Thank you, Chairman. That's my final word of the evening.
Are there any further succinct words that any of you in the committee wish to add in support of the executive's recommendation? But these will be presumably read out at the meeting on Tuesday at the executive and then at the council meeting again. If there's anything specific that you want to say? No? Okay. Thank you very much indeed, everybody. Thank you to the, oh, Member of the Public who's disappeared, couldn't quite make it to the end. Quarter of an hour late. It's an early night. It's an early night. Come on.